All right, it's six o'clock. We'll start our regular meeting and we'll call the meeting to order, please ma'am. And the pledge of allegiance, our vice mayor is going to lead us and Eric is going to do our invocation. If I might extend, please.
Bow with me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, I thank you for all the people that have come out tonight. I pray a special blessing over them. Father, I pray that you will bless us tonight as we go about to see this business. I pray that you will lead and guide everything that we do tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank y'all, folks. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Roll call.
Here.
Jacqueline Granby.
Here.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Eric Harvey.
Here.
Lee Alford.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, we have approval and correction of minutes, and we've got several sets here. Study session, regular meeting, and then our two special call meetings.
Exactly one special call meeting, but we need all of them approved, yeah?
Right, yes.
Just went today.
It did.
But they can all be approved in one time.
So, once you've had the chance...
They're going to give you the dates in your motion.
To look them over, I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the study session on January the 13th, the regular meeting on January the 18th, and a special call meeting on February the 3rd and the 4th of 2022.
Second.
As presented.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second.
Got a bunch of seconds. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We've got a couple of proclamations tonight, which is neat. And first one we've got is Dr. Ryan Jackson. Dr. J, I saw you in the house. If anybody in the commissioners would like to come up, I'd be more than happy for you to.
This is a pretty long proclamation, but there's some things that I just, I feel like, I don't feel like I'm going to say. I met Dr. Jackson about four years ago, five years ago, when I first ran for commission here. I got to tell y'all, when I first made it, I'm born and raised in Mount Pleasant, I went, ooh. I don't think you got a chance. But what you have done at our schools is transformative. And it's not just what goes on with the three R's. It's the lives and how you're changing and the transformation that we're seeing with our students, and that's going to carry over for years and years and years in this community because those people are leaving our school system with opportunities. And one of the things I applaud you for is not just you get out of school and then you go. And one of the biggest things I've seen you do for our community is we've always been somewhat of an industrial community, I'll call it. And it became where your mom worked at the plant, or your dad worked at the plant, your granddad, and all of a sudden those plants work there. And what you're teaching those students over there today in regards to trades in particular is changing your life. And I can't, I'll never be able to thank you enough for being born and raised here. And you know I'm in your corner?
Yeah.
Sometimes you may not want me, but I'm there. So, we'll read this quickly. "Being hereby known that whereas citizens of Mount Pleasant Tennessee are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city; whereas Murray County Principal of the Year is Dr. Ryan Jackson at Mount Pleasant High School. Dr. Jackson possesses these characteristics as a being recognized for his outstanding accomplishments, dedication, and commitment to the students of Mount Pleasant. Dr. Jackson is the executive lead principal of the Mount Pleasant classroom school. Dr. Jackson is the executive lead of the Kids on Stage Foundation of Murray County. Dr. Jackson firmly believes in closing the industry gap by providing opportunities for students committed to skilled workforce. Dr. Jackson is providing opportunities for students committed to skilled workforce. Dr. Jackson has developed partnerships with Parker Hannifin Negotronics Lab, DNC Metal and Welding Lab, and created a botanical innovations young farm table program. He partnered with Lee Company for an HVAC program. Dr. Jackson also oversaw the creation of the broadcast and recording studio of Mount Pleasant High School. Whereas your dedicated service is a meaningful and invaluable asset to these students that you've helped to prepare them for the future. You are certainly much appreciated by the parents, students, and our community. You serve an important role in the guidance and welfare of our children, and we are proud and honored you have received being named Murray County Principal of the Year. Whereas the City of Mount Pleasant and its mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring this outstanding individual for his accomplishments at this time. Now therefore, I Bill White, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February the 15th, 2022, as Murray County Principal of the Year. And call upon all citizens of the City of Mount Pleasant to join us in recognizing this outstanding principal for his achievements. You would please give him a hand."
If anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, do you mind?
Not at all. We'd love for you to.
Sometimes I can be long-winded, but...
I'll probably just go to you.
But I would like to say that is. Not only is this an honor to me, you know, I'm beyond touched. I could probably cry. I mean, it means that much to me. Because, you know, I've committed the last six years of my life to this book, 100%, all in. Never looked in another direction but this was me. But this doesn't happen with one person. You know, there's a team that I'll work with. If I'm good at anything, it's building systems and empowering people around me. And one of your own, born and bred, Eric Hughes, has been on my right side the entire time, this entire journey. So I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge him today because he has been right there with me this whole time. And I'm going to say this for this basketball team right here, okay? The way I've chosen to lead is in front, ten toes down. In times of crisis, people need to see their shepherd. They need to look to a leader. That means you have to be a flag bearer. You got to wave that thing wide and proud. And that means, that's who they shoot at first. Just understand that. But that's the kind of leader that I chose to be. That means you got to take the hits, and when you get hit, you got to show them you can get right back up and keep moving forward. So to be standing here in front of you guys, six years later, on this journey, and what we started, what we've done, many of you on this, in this panel right here with me have been a part of that process. Thank you for this. I'm deeply touched by it, moved by it. Thank you so much. Thank you for the honor.
All right, young men, y'all have to get up and come forward. I know if you had your trophy with you, too.
Oh, my goodness, look at the trophies.
Yeah, we probably all ought to get back here, should be. I'll get right on my rounds.
Eric, any of you want to come down front, so you can get over here and get pictures? You're more than welcome to do that.
Yeah, middle school? I don't think they're going to see you.
Hold up one finger, guys. Eric?
Yeah.
About to catch your pictures? I'm going to read the proclamation right quick, and congratulations. I mean, what an honor to be able to recognize Principal of the Year and state champion in one night. I mean, congratulations. How long's it been? Long time. I can tell you that. A long time.
Hopefully it means something good to the future.
Absolutely right. Absolutely right. All right, we've got a proclamation for you guys, and we each have your copy, so make sure you got it when you leave. "Being hereby known that whereas the City of Mount Pleasant and all its citizens are rightfully proud of its young residents; and whereas the citizens recognize the Mount Pleasant Middle School Boys Basketball Team as an integral part of this community to plan; whereas this team has exemplified the high standard of good sportsmanship and personal conduct in their championships for the 21-22 season with an overall record of 16-6. They had a Murray County Public Schools Small School Record of 7-1. Murray County Public Schools Small School Season Co-Champions, Murray County Public Schools Tournament Champions, and '22 James C. Hale State Tournament Champions. Lee Williams, head coach, and Tyler Moore, assistant coach, were both very instrumental in helping them obtain these outstanding wins and championships. Whereas these teams represented the City of Mount Pleasant, Murray County, and the state of Tennessee with the highest of standards in participation. Now therefore, I Bill White, the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim the date February the 15th, 2022, as Mount Pleasant Middle School Boys Basketball Team Day. To honor them, and do call upon all citizens and residents of the City of Mount Pleasant to join with us in duly recognizing the outstanding performance of these teams. Congratulations." Anything anybody want to add?
Dr. J's tough act, Paul. I'll just say, I'll just say, go Tiger.
You know what? Now I'll take your place then. Because what this man has done, you know, what he's done with this program, you know, a couple of years back, Coach Derek Boyd was in charge of this program, right? Did something similar. Moved on. There was concern. Coach Lee Williams has stepped in there, filled that void, and then some. I'm proud of the direction of this program. I'm proud of Coach Lee. Big shout out to Coach Bourne as well, too. This team, you stand tall, you be proud, buddy. The future, I'm looking at. Let's go. Go Tigers.
And Eric, you got your copy, son. Here's the original. You want the original footage still?
Yeah.
Go right next to that.
You guys want to say anything? We're proud of you anyway.
Let me get one. Thanks for everybody coming out.
Not often we get that opportunity.
They're a good set of boys. She got them a shed, they respect you, and they don't play.
Stay there late, right?
Actually, they look sharp compared to when the Vonte Young was on.
Really? Well, I know you guys aren't going to be getting any of the pictures, I can tell you that.
That's good.
They're all behind them.
Yeah. And I got way off to the side.
They are.
Y'all coordinated on purpose.
I know, we didn't get the red memo, but...
You got them blue?
Valentine said it.
Mount Pleasant, royal and red. I thought it was blue, too. Blue and red. There we go. All right, we'll get right along with the business. We don't have a whole lot, so we ought to be able to move through it. Number six, completion and review of unfinished business from prior meetings. I don't know of any.
No, we don't have anything, Mayor.
Monthly report from mayor. We did that at the work session, just talking about some of the projects, and most everybody heard all those that are left.
They, they, Ward sidewalk today. Concrete looks really good on Locust Street.
I stopped by there before I came here.
It looks so much better than it did.
Boy, doesn't it? They got that head wall on the lower side of it. So, it looks good. Number eight, monthly financial and budget report.
Mayor, you should have all received your report email. Just a couple of things to point out. The, the sales tax, what you all know that we took over the, that portion of that increase from the prior year that went to the schools and the, in this budget, we're electing to keep that here in Mount Pleasant. At this point in time, in this year, year of the day, the revenue is up considerably, and if we keep pace with the average of monthly, you know, sales tax that we've been collecting between July and the end of January, we're on target to be above $150,000 more than what we actually budgeted, which we had budgeted to cover that, that addition. So, we look like we're going to collect even more sales tax. But that's something positive.
Yes. Yes.
Will you, will you have a property tax report in March or not till April? How does that usually work?
It usually will be March.
March, April.
It'll be in April's meeting.
So, what Loretta's saying about the sales tax, I'm sure, you know, if you go through, you know, through the report that she gives us, and I've seen it in the past, but I'm really, I'm not no drinker, but I'm astonished at the money that we receive from here.
The big tax.
Big tax.
It is. It is.
I've spoke on it because now the state can actually break it down for us where the taxes are coming from. And in, was it 19 or 20? It was up, liquor and beer tax was up 18%. And online, and online sales was up 34.
Yeah.
So...
A lot of our...
I made the comment, I said, everybody's sitting at home drinking, pointing, and clicking. Well, they didn't have anything else to do.
I think there, I think that we've seen a shift in shopping and more closer to home. I think the gas prices probably have something to do with that. I mean, that's just me guessing, but I don't have any doubt to support that, but, but just looking around in my own habit and how they changed the pandemic, that I think that that's probably a large, where that money was being spent in Williamson County and Nashville and those areas, I think a lot of those are, dollars are being spent right here. A lot of it with, again, online sales and, and just the local. Right, it's very positive, something very positive in, in a lot of the, in the world, I guess that it's always good to have something positive to report.
Yeah, yeah. Particularly when you got a good number. All right, anything else? Entertain a motion to accept the report. So, move. Got a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Got a bunch of seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, I just want to touch briefly on the census project. You know, we're doing an in-house census. The national census had our numbers at 4,784, when we said it was 5,093. And as of today, we're at 5,365. So the way we look at it is they missed 581 people. And just wanted to remind you that the state transportation block grant funds, if you're not over 5,000, you simply don't get them.
Don't get them.
So that's $80,000 a year that we would not have gotten, period. And it's an ongoing, and it's every year. And then every person in the census is worth at least $150 to us, probably more, and that is close to $90,000 more. So just doing this census, we're going to be looking at somewhere between 160 and $200,000 more each year in revenue. Definitely worth the effort. Command Philip in the Fire Department and Patty Henson has been just on it big time, but we're, we are going to meet tomorrow. We're ready to submit our numbers, and we may lose one here or there, but we, we're going to be well over 5,000 and well over what we were at 5,093. So, all that, again, it's kind of tags on to what Loretta is saying, you know, more continued revenue, and that's, that's what we want.
Sure we're going to have. All right. We thought that would be about 140,000 when we started, if we got back to like 5,200, but to here, it's going to be between 160 and 200 is even better.
Yeah, I think so for sure.
All right, anything else, Kate?
Nope, that's all I had.
Special reports from other departments. Bar's design.
Mayor, Commissioners, you have it in front of you, the frustrating project, well, I guess you're all frustrated lately, aren't they? Sewer trunk line, they are, they were back working on it today. They are well over their deadline. We're going to be getting liquidated damages from them, which really, I just want the project done more so than getting liquidated damages. But you can see that they are working again. Of course, we're getting rain Thursday, which may slow them down again, but that project is underway. Rainy Street Sewer Improvement is at USDA, waiting for them to agree to what we submitted, and the next step would be to bid that out. That's all included in everything you all went through in the special call meeting, but, and then that wastewater treatment plant, they're working on getting the, we've already done the bid concurrence with the contractor, and we have unexecuted contracts that will be coming through to BH Craig and to, for the mayor to sign. So, big step forward since the special call meeting.
Kate, on the, I guess, lagoon. When is it that Spry Field will be shut down?
We're way past the deadline. We just keep getting extensions. And right now, the latest extension in that letter was 2023. 2023 or four?
23.
Okay, yeah. So they know what we're doing, and they just keep extending the deadline as a result of that.
Gas system?
Everything is, is going great in the gas system after the January debacle, but we're doing well, and we've, we had about 10 people looking at the bill when it came in this month, and...
After Mr. Davis's debacle?
We're good.
All right, number 11, new business. A, ordinance 2022-1091 and ordinance correcting scripters error in ordinance 2019-1044.
And Mayor, Commissioners, we kind of refer to this as a typo in our study session. I've got the full ordinance here where Cory has highlighted where we change the, basically the way they've numbered it, but I'm going to let Cory speak to it, and she's been very involved in this from the get-go, and why we have to pass this ordinance.
Back in 2019, when we redid the pre-treatment portion of the sewer ordinance, it went through to reading, but we didn't have, we made the changes based off of TDEC changes, but we didn't have them look at it before we passed it. So, during their recent audit, they recognized that that box wasn't checked, so they relooked at it again. When they looked at it this time, they saw that basically we were citing to Tennessee TDEC rules and regulations in the 1200, but they're no longer listed in the 1200. Now they're in the 0400. And so we had two of those errors where we were calling, they just changed, it would be like us changing the number of a code.
I mean, it's a code, yeah.
Yeah. So they just changed the numbering system. And then we also reference throughout that whole 60-page document, 400 instead of 0400. So, that's the changes we're making. It doesn't change the content at all, but it makes the references correct.
And I have it all here, if you want to look at it, but that's pretty much right there of what she described.
Yeah, the ordinance is pretty straightforward, really. Any questions? Do you want to entertain a motion?
I make a motion to accept 2022-1091.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, approval for bid for pest control services.
And Mayor, Commissioners, we talked about this at the study session, that we awarded the bid last year to bug-out termite and pest control. They've not been out here since November, so we've sent a letter canceling their services, and the next bid that we would like to recommend the commission allow us to work with is reliable pest control.
I don't have a problem with that. It sounded like it was a, I think when we got the bid initially, we were all scratching our heads, how they were going to do it. We have, we have a responsibility to do what's best for the community. When you get one that low, you got to look at it.
And every department was complaining about...
It wasn't just one.
Bugs being back, mice being back, everything, so...
I think it's right. What do we need? Do we need a...
Yeah, people didn't even come out here.
Yeah.
It's great.
Then they, then we're not, then they told us they wouldn't go.
Yeah.
Have we terminated that contract?
We sent a letter saying we no longer need their services, and they haven't been here. They're supposed to be here at least monthly. They haven't been here since November.
And the gentleman verbally told me he wasn't coming back, but he had never got anything arrived until I sent him one from the wire.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's, they've had, they've received that.
Okay.
So we need a motion to accept this. Okay. Entertain a motion?
I make a motion to accept the bid for reliable pest control.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of form for the hotel motel tax.
Mayor, Commissioners, I apologize. Loretta and I didn't realize that in the ordinance, it says that when we create the form to collect the tax, you all are supposed to approve that form. And so, it's in front of you in here, and we just need you to, and you got this straight from Randy McNeese?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, we just, we just changed everything and put Mount Pleasant.
Put Mount Pleasant on it?
But it specifically says that the commission would approve this form, so we need your approval on this form.
Anybody got any questions? I got, I mean, I looked it over. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and we'll put it on paper, work, papers that has the seal in the background, but...
And we did get a call this week, or an email yesterday, from a company that does, that collects, that pays sales tax for customers for their clients, and which I assume that the hotel boy is asking questions, so we should be starting to collect those here soon.
Yeah, we, RBOs, Airbnb, hotels, and, you know, we'll see what kind of income that brings us, but we're prepared to forget something in the future.
Any questions? Entertain a motion to accept the form. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I think...
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Rodney said we had nobody signed up for general comments.
No, I, but I had one.
Kate asked to slide something in.
Correct. And I'm going to talk to you about it, and then it'll be formally in front of you next month, but just like we did the developers agreement with Murray County Investments here at the parking lot for the grill, we have this new development, Sugar Creek, and they've come to us saying that they would like to do gas service, and they would agree that they would have at least two appliances in the home that are gas, so that, that means that we've got 49 new gas customers. And in the agreement, we will say that they'll dig the ditch, we will cover up the ditch line, and then in agreement, we're covering the two-inch gas line, two chaps, and two valves to connect with our main, and that this extension would be contingent on a signed contract from the city commission where your firm agrees to install a gas water heater and one other appliance in each home. And so you're going to see more and more of this with new homes that are going in, that, you know, we're, we're giving you something in return for you, you know, becoming good customers of ours. So, we'll have that in front of you, but we want you to know that we're moving forward with that because they are out there digging, but we'll have it formalized in front of you in March. If anybody has any concerns about it at all, let me know and ask me about it.
I'd love to hear. I'll catch myself riding over there at least twice a week, and I saw the sewer truck over there the day in the road, they had it blocked off or whatever. And I thought then, I said, I believe I'd change the name of my company. and I thought then, I said, I believe I changed the name of my company. Sewer rats.
I haven't seen that, I have not seen that.
Yeah, SRSI or something like that. I mean, it just kinda caught me off guard that that was the name of the company.
Did you wanna add something, Cory, I'm sorry?
Not related to that, I was just gonna let y'all know, delinquent tax bill is March 8th.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion in a second, and I'm, all those in favor? Aye. Thanks, everybody. Nice evening.